Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you will please stand for invocation and pledge. Now that Carrie's here, we can get started.
I'm not a showstopper. I am the show. All right. Thank you all for being here tonight. Appreciate it. Join me as we pray. Our dedication is something, Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for just the opportunity to live in Cartersville, to live, work, and play here, and the quality of life that this great city affords us. And we celebrate that tonight. Thank you for that opportunity, and also for the opportunity to come here and do the business of the city, and just walk with us, go before us, give us wisdom and knowledge as we do that and make those decisions. And thank you for those who are here today, the things that we celebrate. May we continue to celebrate those great things in our great city. And we'll give you the praise and glory for all you've done for us, and it's in your holy name we pray.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ray Carroll, please.
Carrie Hyde, Ward 1, here for Day Step, Ward 2. Carrie Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Culey, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Alyssa Cornell, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Julia. The first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from that fun night of July the 3rd. You've had a chance to look over those minutes, and I think Julia was on point, but if y'all picked out anything wrong, now would be a time to note that, and if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I like that start there. Thinking about quick starts. We are honored tonight to be, to have some state champs in the house. We have the Cartersville 8 and Under All-Stars, the 2025 GRPA State Champions. Their head coach, Nick Ferguson, is here. Would like to say a few words, so come on up and impart some wisdom right there at that podium there. You can, you can face us. You don't have to bother that thing. You don't need to scream right into it either.
First off, I'd just like to say thank you, Mr. Mayor and staff, for having us out today. What an honor this is for these young men. Also, to my team, congratulations again. It's been an honor to work with these coaches and coach you guys. This season begins in early February, runs late into June. Whether it was 35 degrees when we started or 95 when we finished, these boys came to work, never complained, it never phased them, and it paid off in a big way this season. For that, you'll be state champions for the rest of your life. My parents on the team, thank you. This day and time, everything is a million different directions, and no matter what the coaches ask, you figured it out and made it happen. We're so thankful for you guys. My coaches, thank you. There's not another group of guys I'd rather lead these boys with. And again, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Don't be surprised to hear this group's name for years to come. They're just getting started. Thank you.
I do have a proclamation I'm gonna read. There's copies for all the players and coaches, and when I'm done doing that, we're gonna come down here, take a quick photo that Ava will capture the moment with, and then those of you with cell phones that want to take a picture, that's, that's, that's fine too. And then after that, you're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of the night. Or... And just as an update, I'll give you a little peek behind Jace's following the game on Game Changer, because our 12 and Under team is in pretty good position right now?
Top of the fifth.
There we go. So we'll hopefully be able to announce another one later tonight.
I am focused on the city.
I know you are. That's right. This proclamation reads, "Whereas the Cartersville 8 U All-Stars have exemplified the highest standards of athletic excellence, teamwork, and sportsmanship in youth baseball, proudly representing the city of Cartersville throughout the 2025 tournament season, the team achieved a major milestone in winning the GRPA District 5 8-and-Under Championship in Dalton on June 7th through the 11th with a dominant combined score of 34 to 6 over four games." Guys were mean to the other team. Building on that success, the 8 U All-Stars advanced to the GRPA 8-and-Under State Tournament also held in Dalton on June 24th through the 26th, where they continued their exceptional performance with a combined score of 70 to 22 across five games, culminating in a decisive 15 to 7 victory over Somerville in the state championship game. The dedication, leadership, and mentorship of the coaching staff, manager Nick Ferguson, assistants Adam Jones, Aubrey Cavali, and TJ Maneri played a vital role in the team's development and success. The following players contributed to this championship achievement: A.J. Jones, Baylor Foster, Beckham Bowden, Brooks Cavali, Brooks Poole, Colton Hamby, Corbin Ferguson, Donovan Tate Jr., Easton Fillers, Jackson Miller, Max Brown, and Nolan Maneri. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Santini, Mayor of the city of Cartersville, along with all the council, congratulate the Cartersville 8-and-Under All-Stars in their remarkable season and proclaim July 17th, that's today, in 2025 as Cartersville 8 U All-Stars Day in the city of Cartersville in recognition of their 2025 state championship title and bringing pride and inspiration to the community. Good job, guys.
If you'll stand center, those four coaches, well, two, do two on either side. The boys can just, they can just be... I'm gonna try my best. Okay. Does this move? Okay, yes. Yeah, just scooch, just... Trying, there we go. Perfect. Ready, gentlemen? One, two, three? Very nice. Congratulations, boys.
I think they're getting some more pictures.
Always will.
They never got to State Changers. They went up.
All right. Well, they're making a little bit of space for us, council. I will ask for you to add seven items to the agenda tonight, please. Do I have a second? Thank you. All in favor of Kate by saying aye? And we've got seven items added. Don't worry, they're added to the end. We're gonna go ahead and get started with Z24-08 and call on Mr. Menino to get us started on that, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council. For both cases on the agenda this evening, they've been properly posted and advertised. Appears to be no conflicts of interest, and they were reviewed based on the adopted standards for exercises, zoning powers in the city. With that, Z24-08 is a 78-acre tract that runs between Center Road and Overlook Parkway. It's been on the agenda several times. It's been, remained in back to Planning Commission. It's been back to council, tabled by council the last time you heard it. The request is for approximately, I believe, 113 townhomes off of Overlook Parkway. Then off the Center Road portion, they're looking to do 70 single-family homes. Planning Commission did recommend denial of the application, and with that, we're gonna hear it again.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Randy at this time? If there are none, I will open up a public hearing for Z24-08. As I do that, just anybody that's, that's here now, just a couple things about the hearings. First of all, thank you for being here. That's why we're here, to represent you. The way that these public hearings work, the applicant will have the first opportunity to speak, and they'll also have the last opportunity to speak. In between then, anybody else can get up and speak. When you come forward, we'll ask you to please give your name and your address so that our clerk can get that in the records. There was a sign-up sheet outside that hopefully anybody that wishes to speak has done so. It's still out there if you, if you do want to do that. We'd also ask you that in these hearings, my job is to get as much information to council as, as they can so that they can make a decision. And so, we always want to be plowing new ground. If somebody has come up and said something about a topic, us hearing it five times isn't gonna deepen our knowledge of the topic. We, we've got it gathered, okay? So, again, our role is, but we also want to hear from you. We're gonna limit comments to three minutes. Mr. Love will be the timekeeper, and, and if he, if he says it's time, if you'll just wrap up what you're saying, and, and we'll move forward from that, okay? So I've opened up a public hearing for Z24-08 and asked the applicant if they'd like to step forward and make their presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Robert Walker, 15 South Public Square. I'm here representing the applicant, Starlight Homes. Robert Jordan Holmes is the owner of the property. Of course, this has been here a number of times before, and I'm gonna keep my presentation brief. There's also a gentleman here, John Briscoe, who is the land entitlement manager for Ashton Woods and Starlight Homes, who I will bring up in just a moment, who's gonna speak and can talk a little bit more about the specifics of the project. But, this is a 78.8-acre proposed development. It's part of a larger 289-acre total tract. There are two specific, two parts of this proposed development. One part is a townhome tract that would be off of Overlook Parkway, which is essentially accessed off of Main Street, and then a single, a single-family development that would be accessed off of Center Road. We are asking the property be rezoned from R20 to PD or planned development. The, the track that's on the left, of course, is from Center Road. That's the 70 single-family detached homes. Again, that would be accessed solely off of Center Road. And then there, on the right-hand side of this photograph is the 113 townhomes that would be accessed off of Overlook Parkway. On the far right of that is an existing multifamily development that has already been built, that is on Overlook Parkway. If you go down Main Street to where it dead ends at the end of Main Street, take a left, that's what's called the Prose Apartment Complex. This would be, this new townhome development, if approved, would be accessed through that existing apartment complex. So, this was tabled at the meeting at the end of June at my request, and, you know, it has been pending for quite a while. In fact, I went back and looked. The application was made by, by the applicant in September of 2024. And so, after my involvement, you, you guys were kind enough to give us some additional time to let me get up to speed and to look at what, if anything, quite frankly, in terms of density or possible alternatives, we could look at, and I could talk with my clients about and regarding this development. And so, what I learned is that one reason that this development has been pending as long as it is is that my client has, quite frankly, worked tirelessly with the city staff to try to address the concerns that residents and the city has raised to this, to this effort. We're, we are on the third iteration of the plan at this point. The initial application that was filed with the city in September of 2020, uh, 2024 had 241 total units. There was an amendment to that application that was made to address concerns that reduced that to 233 total units. And the current application, if you do the math, 70 single-family town, uh, single-family detached dwellings and 113 townhomes is 183 total units. So we have reduced the plan from 241 units to 183 units. That's approximately a 25% total reduction in the number of units in terms of density in an attempt to address what we've heard from those that are concerned. And Mr. Briscoe is going to talk about a number of other changes to the plans within the development to improve the quality of the product that's being offered as well, to make this something that everyone can and should be excited about. And so with that, I certainly will answer any questions, but I would like to turn it over to Mr. Briscoe, who can talk specifically about the plan, tell you all about it, and go through that in detail. But before I do that, does anyone have any questions for me?
I've got a question, and I probably should know this, but maybe you can tell me. On the residential side, that's the single-family detached that's on Center Road, maybe Randy, you can, if you don't know, I'm sure Randy does the, what is the density of that, or what category does that, is that like an R7, or is it?
Well, it would be planned development in, is, is the actual...
But what would be the equivalent of, from a density perspective?
Well, it's, it's, I can tell you exactly what the...
The overall density for both the townhomes and Center Road is 2.32 units per acre. Extremely low on the Center Road side just because of all open space that will be placed within. I'm sure the numbers in our analysis, just this analysis is...
Yeah. And I was looking for it, so I didn't have to ask it, but I just wanted to make sure what that would...
Yeah, it's two, that's right, 2.3 units per acre, and, and that's both on the, on the single-family side and the townhome side. It's actually the same, and it was designed purposely that way by the developer. And that's actually, just so you know, and, and Mr. Briscoe was planning to cover that, that's, that density is actually less than the Satterfield Commons community that's about a half a mile less, or half a mile west of the project, and, and it's, and it's consistent with the other developments that are nearby as well. The Merrill Townhome community, the, the other communities that are nearby.
I understand when you take a look at it as a whole, but again, I guess I should have asked this before now, but... And maybe we don't, and maybe we don't have an answer tonight, and again, that's, again, I'm certainly not...
We need to break it down, but there's 65% of the entire property is being left in open space.
Okay. So what I'm saying is, if we took a look at, if we just subtract, if we take a look at what that subdivision is, a proposed subdivision is, the part with single-family homes, what is the, where, from a density perspective, would it be higher than R7? I guess what are the size lots that we're talking about?
The lots are fairly small in there, so they can leave the open space, but again, the overall density, we'd have to recalculate it.
Okay.
We can do that calculation.
Thank you. And we, and again, this is the first reading. We've got time between there. If that'd be just, for me, that would be helpful.
We can find that number out.
Thank you for that.
On their site analysis, it says there are minimum of 5,000 feet, 5,000 square feet, I believe it is. So, that's less than R7. So, can I?
Yeah, that, I mean, I can tell you that tract, and Mr. Briscoe may can answer that question. I can tell you that tract is about 28 acres, roughly, that single-family tract, if you look at the way it is there, so there's about 70 homes.
28, 70 homes on 28 acres?
That's, that's about right.
That's what I wanted to hear.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker, I know one of the biggest concerns out there is traffic. And there's a lot more development besides this one going on out there at Center Road. I know I've asked this a couple of times, is there any way they could connect those two neighborhoods? So there would be additional way to get out of there besides Center Road, you know, going to 41 or going out to 75?
There's, there's really no plans to do that, Mr. Fox. There's, there's several reasons why that's the case. One is, the road, Overlook Parkway is, was constructed and permitted as a minor distributor road by Cartersville, and really wasn't designed to handle the traffic that that would, that that would, would cause if it were, were done that way. Number two, there are security concerns for the existing residents of the apartment complex at the Prose Development, the multifamily development, and the townhome development, if approved, that would come in there. That is supposed, would, would be a secured facility for those residents. There's also some concerns that have been raised by some about, on the other side of the aisle, about additional traffic that that could cause, where traffic could actually increase, where people could be, could use that as a cut-through, you know, to come from Highway 20 to, to Main Street, or where people could use that if I-75 were stopped, and they could use that to, to come through and go to Highway 20 or bypass, you know, traffic issues on I-75. And then finally, there are, you know, quite frankly, severe topographical issues on that property that make that a tremendous challenge for the, for the developer. And so, there are no plans to do that, and it would be a tremendous challenge to do that for all of those reasons.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Walker? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Briscoe, would you like to speak now?
Sure, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name's John Briscoe. Starlight Homes is 3820 Mansell Road in Alpharetta, 30022. For those of you that aren't familiar with Starlight Homes, it is a sister company to Ashton Woods. We are headquartered here in Atlanta. We were named 2023 Builder of the Year by Builder Magazine. We are a financially secure organization with strong operations that has the ability to support the homeowners association, subdivision maintenance until the community is turned over after closeout. All of our financial data is public knowledge and could be found on our website. Starlight Homes is focused on affordability due to the large number of first-time home buyers entering the market. The demand for lower price points is outpacing supply, and Starlight's goal is to convert renters into first-time home buyers. David already has up the site plan with the typical lot layouts that was prepared by our engineer. This is a 78.8-acre site, as mentioned, of which 54 acres will remain open space. That's 69% of the site that will remain forested green space, which is three times the amount required by the ordinance. The site has a proposed density of 2.3 units per acre on both the single-family detached and townhome portions of the site. The proposed density for the single-family detached portion is less than the Ponders Mountain directly across Center Road at 2.6 units per acre, as previously mentioned. The proposed density for the townhome portion is much less than the Satterfield Commons community about a half-mile west along Center Road, which has less, which has a density of around 4.6 units per acre. The townhome portion will consist of 113 two-story, three-bedroom, one-car garage townhomes, which is the same product currently under construction at Satterfield Commons, which is a rental community. We are proposing pricing in the low 300,000s. The single-family detached portion of the project will consist of 70 three- and four-bedroom, two-car garage, single-family detached homes with pricing in the 400,000s. Through public participation and working closely with staff, we have made several changes that have improved the site plan. Staff does not oppose the zoning change for this property. The site plan considers a transition in land planning from high-density residential to low-density. Stepped down from 700 apartments along Overlook Parkway to 113 proposed townhomes along Overlook Parkway and 70 proposed single-family detached along Center Road. As mentioned, there's no vehicular connection between the townhome portion and the single-family detached portion. We have addressed concerns regarding driveway lengths for the townhome portion of the project, setbacks and driveway lengths for the single-family detached portion of the site, on-street parking, and appropriate cap on rental units and traffic concerns. With regards to driveway lengths, we increased the lengths to 20 feet from back of sidewalk for both the single-family detached and townhome portions to help provide space for vehicles to park on the driveways and not obstruct the sidewalk. Additionally, there's a five-foot sidewalk and two-foot beauty strip, which results in 27 total from back of curb. Both communities have sidewalks on one side of the street. With regards to building setbacks, we're not requesting any variances. With regards to on-street parking, both the single-family detached and townhome communities will be governed by a homeowners association. Covenants for both portions of the site will prohibit on-street parking. The townhomes portion of the site has 23 visitor parking spaces, which is 20% of the total unit count. This section will be gated and private streets where the HOA will have the authority to tow vehicles if needed. It's important to note that the single-family detached and townhome portions are not connected by a road, which will reduce traffic in both communities and eliminate cut-through traffic. As for rental concerns, this will be a for-sale community, which provided proposed HOA covenants capping rental units at 10% and limiting a single person or entity to owning no more than five units. Maximum rental units allowed would be 11 townhomes and seven single-family detached based on the 10% cap. With regards to traffic, the original traffic study was conducted in 2023 and was based on 241 combined units. The current site plan is a total of 183 units, which is a 24% reduction in unit count. Based on input from staff, we collected new traffic count data from mid to late January of this year and widened the scope of the study to include additional intersections on Center Road as well as to the north of Smiley Ingram Road. The updated traffic counts along Center Road captured new trips coming from recently open residential developments. The trip generation calculations for the future included traffic from the under-construction Merrill Townhomes site on Center Road and the Eastwood Townhome Development on Smiley Ingram Road. The traffic study states a right-turn lane is recommended for the single-family detached entrance along Center Road while the left-turn lane was not warranted. There are no special recommendations for the townhome entrance along Overlook Parkway. The traffic study concludes that traffic operations will remain satisfactory under both the no-build and build conditions at all study, study intersections. When comparing the no-build and build delay times, the impact and added site traffic operations with the study network is shown to be minimal. The updated traffic study was reviewed by staff in February of this year. Happy to answer any additional questions that you guys may have. I appreciate your time.
Any questions?
Yeah, so, go back in your presentation.
Sure.
Talk to me, are both of these developments are private roads?
The townhome portion is gonna be private, yes.
And what is the, what is the, like, holdback maybe for your organization to split this and to do two different zonings? So, would the townhomes be PD, where the subdivision would be R20 and leave it at R20? What is the drawback? Because I, I mean, I see the, the original concept that was still under R20. What would be the drawback of keeping it R20 versus changing that one to PD?
And going with the full original site plan of straight, single-family?
Original site plan, but as I look at the, the original site plan, which is, which is under R20, is it just the amount of homes that you can put in that spot? And why would you not go to maybe to R10 and guarantee the lot size? Because right now, when I look at your, the analysis, it's like, under PD, your at a minimum size would be 5,000.
Right.
You know, like, I stated before, in a different scenario, you have no amenities. You breaking down the size of the lot. You're building multi-bedroom homes, which means children. And so then you're putting this home on a much smaller lot, so you have no room for a place set. You have, you're, if you're gonna sell these homes in the 300 and 400,000s, you have no room to add a pool. You have no room to add an amenity. So I think, you know, when you look at the, the city, we are losing a lot of R20. I mean, the R20 is going away.
Right.
And that lot size. So, but when you look at the R-10, I mean, you might have some room there, but I think when you go to the PD, I think then you're, you have no limit on your size. So, is there any drawback from going to splitting this and rezoning the residential different?
I'm not 100% sure, if I'm going to be completely honest. I just know that we were going for the zoning of PD. A lot of our homeowners are going to be first-time homebuyers. They're going to be young professionals that are buying that typically don't have children, especially on the townhome portion of the site. So, yeah, I know that doesn't really answer your question, but I'm going to be honest, I'm not 100% sure regarding that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
We're in the midst of a public hearing for Z-24-08. Ask anybody who wishes to do so to speak for or against. They may do so at this time.
My name is Jay Harold. I live at 35 Hidden Valley Lane, which is past this development, just a side street off, and we live in the, obviously live in the city. I'm not against development at all. I know what's going to happen in Carersville. We're a growing town, and we've got to expect that. But this particular road, Center Road, has been inundated with additional apartments. Subdivisions have been added to this road. Those of us who've been around here for a while, I've been here 30 years, really no improvements have been made on this road in that length of time. This is a very dangerous road. It is windy, it is up and down hills, there's blind curves, and right where you're putting this, where they're proposing putting this, is right halfway down a hill after a blind curve, and then it goes down. I can tell you from experience that there's probably two crashes a week, people driving down that hill. You have people driving to the lake on the weekends going up that road. All I'm asking for is consideration for improving that road. I know some of it's in the county, but what's in the city? We have to do something now before we hit that tipping point and have this problem with another subdivision or another apartment complex on this road. Security, we're as concerned about a security as the proposed owner or the proposed property is. We're concerned about traffic, just like the people living in those apartments on the other side. It's a dangerous road, and I think we've got to take action to improve the road before we add more, another 140 cars. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, come on, step forward, sir.
My name's Arthur Smith. I live at 25 Autumn Canyon Path, southeast Cartersville, Georgia, 30121. I've got a couple of questions about this. We were talking about this plot here, but that third scheme down there keeps popping up, popping up, popping up, that is changing this plan to a much bigger property, much bigger number of houses, much bigger number of apartments. Why is it on there if we're only talking about this project?
Well, the outlined sides there, again, is the left side that you're looking at on the screen is single-family homes. The right side is the townhomes that the applicant just discussed. And so, that is, that is all that we are looking at in this hearing. We're not, that's...
But what's to keep them if they get their foot in the door here, that they pull up this third one, come back in and ask for an amendment to what they get approved? Pull that third...
I don't, I don't know what you're referring to as far as the third one.
On the bottom left-hand side.
This is the entirety of the project, and it's inside that that we're looking at. And...
Talking about the older version of it, I think.
Talking about if they did it in R-20?
Yeah.
That's what it would look like if they had to do it in R-20, but that was all the great, they'd have to break down some hillsides to do that.
Yeah, the only thing we're considering is, is that first slide that we were just looking at.
Okay. So, then...
That's not being considered.
Yeah, that's, that's not in, under consideration right now at all.
But will it be later on if they get started?
I can't look into the future, but they'd have to go through the same process again, and I bet we'd see you up here.
I bet. Okay. Going back to the other, they're talking about, again, they're talking about that the homes on the left side is going to be governed by HOA, and they're going to control the parking on the street and all this. That is the pipe dream. We live in Autumn Canyon, right across from there, or right below there, and we have an HOA, and we cannot control nothing in that subdivision.
Son, I don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Smith. The part that he was talking about that was going to be private streets is that piece on the other side, which is the townhome portion?
Right.
That part, again, according to the applicant or what he's proposing is for that to be just that side, not the single-family home that's impacted by Center Road. But the other side that's going to be, for lack of a better term, the Main Street side, that would be private, and if those roads are private, they are maintained by that company, and they can enforce that. You are absolutely correct. If there are public roads and HOA can't order things, your argument is a correct one relative to the, to the left side of the property or the piece that's on Center Road. But he was not saying that was going to be the case for the single-family home side. It's the other side that was going to have the private, the private roads.
Right, I understand, but he's saying the one on the left is...
Those will be public, and they'll be subject to the same frustrations that you have in your subdivision with people parking in the street.
Cars on the street and kids playing, and they come by my house running 50 miles an hour, and they can't be controlled by the police department or anything. So, my next question is, they made changes to the plans. Has these changes been sent through the plan review board for them, because they've already turned it down twice? Do they not have to go back over the changes for approval?
The only change from the last time is we tabled it because they brought on Mr. Walker, and he asked us for more time so that he can review the application and get up to speed. And so, we granted them, him, that request. And so, the same piece that went to the Planning Commission that was denied by the Planning Commission, their recommendation was for denial.
Right.
That's exactly what we're looking at here today. There has not been any changes. Had there been changes, we would have, we would have had the option to send it back to them, but we didn't because there were no changes. They just asked for more time.
Okay. My last question is, have you considered, like the gentleman was praying, people moved here to Cartersville because it was a quiet neighborhood, had homes, good-sized homes and yards to play in, and, and the traffic wouldn't, nothing like Dunwoody and all the other big cities around here. And now, we're wanting to make it a big city that is going to have hundreds of thousands of cars. Right now, you can't hardly even get up and down Joe Frank Harris Highway in morning time and evening time, just from the buildings that's already been built. We've got three subdivisions within a quarter of a mile of our subdivision, and you're wanting to build a fourth one. And like the other gentleman said, people running down Center Road at 50 and 60 miles an hour, they come around in winding curves, and you have to almost get off of the road to let them by, they're traveling so fast. And it is just too dangerous to add another 150 cars from another subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're continuing on with Z-24-08 and asking anybody who wishes to step forward to speak on the topic for or against to do so at this time. Anyone else? All right, that being the case, I'm going to close the public hearing. Well, actually, Mr. Walker, did you want to make any final comments as you write?
Just one or two things may I address?
Sure.
Just point out, just to point out on the, the map that was shown at the bottom of, that was brought up, that third map there, of course, that is a flat, I believe, that was approved or shown, at least as, of course, R-20. The property is currently zoned R-20. So, that is a plan that was, that was approved and shown. That, that plan could essentially be built under the current zoning.
What's that?
That plan could essentially be built under the current zoning. So, without, you know, of course, someone mentioned there would have to be a great deal of site work done, but the property would not have to be rezoned to build all of those homes. You know, a lot of site work would have to be done, but they could go out and build those homes without having to come before this, this board and, or this council and get this property rezoned. And so, you know, there could be quite a few more homes built there than what we're asking for with this rezoning, as indicated by that plan. So, what we're actually asking for is sort of a reduction in density with our proposed rezoning. And, and so, and I think to go, there was a question to ask, I believe, about R-10. I think I'll take a stab at trying to answer that in terms of how or why couldn't we, or what would be the difficulty in moving to R-10? And it is the topography, quite frankly, and I'm not saying it's, and we'll talk about that and try to report back maybe a little more in-depth to you before the next meeting, but there, there are obviously topographical issues there and development issues. And so, that is one of the challenges that we have there on that, on that, on that property. And so, you know, to be frank with you, quite frankly, that is, that is it. And so, but we will, we will look at that and try to give you a, a, you know, a clear and direct answer before the next meeting. And I appreciate the question, though.
Mr. Walker, and when it comes to density, that was kind of the point I was trying to make earlier. I mean, yeah, we can show this, and you can say, oh, yeah, all we've got to do is move about $10 million worth of dirt, and we can have these houses out here. Well, the truth of the matter is, you don't want to do it, or I don't know anybody in the right mind in the wood, because you're not going to get your money back on it. But at the same time, to say that, hey, look at our density numbers so low, because in the midst of this development, we've got this expanse of unusable land, and to portray it as if it's coming out of the goodness of your heart, because you want to have all this green space and this open space.
Yeah.
I think, again, that's why I was asking, again, right now, I'm looking at 70 homes on 28 acres. I'm not looking at the expanse of unusable land or costly developable land. I'm looking at, again, one of the things that Councilman Roth brought up is what is the quality of the, of life for the people that are going to be moving here? We can have a discussion about first-time homebuyers and how many are going to be able to spend 350 to 400,000 dollars. That's really not a function of government, and, you know, times are what they are. It's pretty much, I don't know how you can build one any cheaper than that around here. But, again, that was...
Well, I was here...
Again, as we consider the R-10, or as you guys look at that and do whatever analysis you want, I just, I wanted to clarify what I was asking earlier relative, again, to that density number, because it's, it's a little bit skewed by undevelopable land.
It is, and it's all around that, that property. I was here a year or so ago when you all approved the townhome development where Merrill Townhomes is. That's, if I recall, approximately 101-acre tract. I believe there's about 30 acres of that that was actually developable. There's over 100 townhomes, I believe, on that 30-acre tract. Of course, if you look at their density numbers, they have 100 and some odd townhomes on 101 acres, but really only 30 acres of that is developable. Of course, I was here, you all recall, for neighboring property owner interested in some other issue and easement, but I recall being here for that, but that property was very similar. And so, I, I know what, you know, I get that. And those, those topographical issues are all around this property.
Sure.
So, I appreciate that, and that point is well-made, and, and so, but I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. That'll close the public hearing for Z-24-08. We will have another public hearing on August the 7th. We'll go through the same process, and then we will turn it over to council for consideration. So, that being the case, we'll move along to the next item, which is AZ-25-02, and ask Mr. Manino to get us started on that one, please.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed annexation and rezoning of approximately 41-acre tract. It's bounded on the west side by Parkside at Carter Grove, on the north side by Carter Grove, on the east side by Switch, and on the south side is 173-acre tract in the county agricultural tract. They're proposing to rezone this to R-7, single-family residential. They're looking to do something very similar to what was already or currently under development for Parkside at Carter Grove. I know we've covered a lot of details, so I'm not going to go into a lot of details on this, but the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the annexation into the city, but did recommend denial of the zoning to the R-7 category.
Thank you. Questions for Randy at this point? Thank you, sir. Now, when we have a zoning, an annexation of the zoning, we technically have two public hearings. The first one will be for the zoning, and the second one will be for the annexation. So, if you're choosing to come up and speak, make sure we're talking about the same thing. However, I will say this in the midst of that. Anything you say in the zoning hearing, those comments will cover, will carry on over to the annexation hearing, okay? So, if you've spoken in one, those comments are going to be gathered in both places and vice versa. So, I know it's kind of difficult to kind of divide those things. I know in our conversations and our questions, we'll probably go back and forth between zoning and annexation in the process as well. But this is specifically, this first hearing is specifically for the zoning that is being requested by the applicant, not the annexation into the city. So, I'll open up the zoning portion of request, AZ-25-02, and the applicant has an opportunity to speak first.
Robert Walker, 15 South Public Square, here again for the applicant. Of course, I'm here, my partner Brandon Bowen has represented the applicant throughout this process. He had a conflict of interest tonight and had to be at a different public hearing, and so I'm, I'm batting in his steed tonight. So, I appreciate you hearing me out on this one. So, of course, I'm here on behalf of, of the applicant, Forestar, who is asking, of course, that the property be annexed and rezoned into the city of Cartersville. As you know, and as Randy indicated, the property is approximately 41.4 acres. It's currently in the county. It's zoned A1, and the proposed zoning is R-7, according to the application. There has been, which we can talk about, some discussion about that potential classification and whether some other classification may be more appropriate, which we will certainly discuss. And, of course, staff did not oppose that R-7 rezoning, but there was a recommendation of denial from the Planning Commission. So, there's 109 units that's being proposed by the developer and applicant. And just as a little background, I mean, the reason that the R-7 classification was chosen was, quite frankly, because of a statutory change that took place between the time that the Parkside development was built and when our clients decided to, to make this application, a state statutory change. And all that our client, quite frankly, was trying to do was mimic what was being built in, in the Parkside development. And so, but because of a statutory change that took place when the Parkside development was built, they were able to go in, they, they got the property zoned R-10, but they were, they got a variance at the time. And at the time that they got the variance, the city of Cartersville staff was able to give them an administrative variance, because the ordinance at that time allowed for an administrative variance. Since that time, state law has been amended or changed, and the city of Cartersville's ordinance has been amended to be in conformity with state law to take away the staff's right to provide those administrative variance. to provide those administrative variances. And so, that option is no longer allowed by, under the city's ordinance, to our clients at this point. And so, we, through discussions amongst ourselves and with staff, decided to make the application under this R7 to mimic what is at Parkside. This is not some trick or, you know, we're not trying to pull wool over anybody's eyes or do something that's any different than what is at Parkside. It's just because of this change in the law. And so, just to give a little background for, for everybody's benefit here, couple of things that we think are important I wanted to address. Of course, everybody's concerned about density. There are some things, this plan, by the way, that is being shown here is actually a slightly modified plan that we've submitted today that would actually be a plan that would address, would, would, would be under a, an R10 submitting, a submittal. And so, if you, there's actually a plan, if you go back, the original plan that we submitted is, is the R7 plan, but this is an R10 plan. Just to demonstrate the, what I was talking about, the difference between R7 and R10 and the fact that they are essentially the same for purposes of what we are trying to do, we can actually, the, the number of lots do not change based on our plans between what we do between whether we go R10 or R7. So, anyway, when it comes down to density, the staff's calculation of the proposed development is 2.6 units per acre. You'll see in your agenda packet, and if anyone read that, whether staff or council members or public, and you may have seen that Parkside at Carter Grove, there was a notation of 1.6 units per acre. And so, you may say, well, you've got greater density than Parkside. And not to, not to say that staff did anything wrong, but we would point out that we think that's a little bit skewed in that there's, if you go to the slide number three, you'll see, this is the Parkside plat. You'll see this huge green space area here at Parkside or green area. It's really an area that's undevelopable at Parkside. This is getting back to our prior public hearing. This is about 67 acres at Parkside. It's all, all that area that's dark green are actually streams and things at Parkside that they really could not develop. And so, all of that is, is included in the density calculation for Parkside. So, when you take that out of the density calculation for Parkside, you actually come to a 2.3 units per acre, which is exactly the same density that you come to with our Wilson Pass development, which is going to be the, the name of this development that we will have once you, you know, after we get our land disturbance permit and all that. So, essentially, we wanted to point that out, that those density numbers will be precisely the same between Parkside after you remove that, you know, that area there that's undevelopable and what we're proposing. Essentially, the lot sizes are exactly the same, is what I wanted to point out. Another issue, of course, is traffic. Everybody, you know, has, of course, talked about traffic. Anyone that's, you know, talked to residents, or I'm sure people will get up here and talk about that. Of course, anyone that drives down Old Alabama knows what a mess that is right now with the improvements that, that the Department of Transportation is doing. We have reviewed and discussed with the GDOT and confirmed that they are scheduled to have the Old Alabama project completed and done before we are done with construction of any of the homes.
Yeah, we've heard a lot of discussion about completion dates of that road, too.
Well, listen, all I can say is, all I can say is, we, you know, we have to take them at their word. That's what they say, and before our homes come online, they're supposed to be done with that road.
Gotcha.
So, and so, we, you know, based off of that, we, you know, we'll be adding no new traffic to that, at least that portion of the, of the, of the intersection before, you know, construction's completed. School system, the school system, you know, did not object. You know, they were asked as, as all these cases to weigh in, they made no objection. You know, of course, I would point out that, you know, this, this original master plan of Carter Grove included almost 2,000 homes that were taken offline by the Switch project that, that the school system initially had in, in, in the hopper, so to speak, that's no longer part of that, part of their, you know, their, their educational requirement. So, anyway, they, the other thing that I would point out is, again, this property is in the county. It's still there. If it, if for some reason this were to get denied, you know, my clients would be forced to, to apply for rezoning in the county. We would anticipate that the county would rezone the property to allow for some sort of residential development, and you would still have school buses coming through Carter Grove subdivision, county school buses, picking up kids. You'd still have people driving through that subdivision to get to it. So, you're still going to have the same traffic issues, and they're not going to be paying taxes to the city. So, you know, that's, you're going to have the same issues without any of the benefit. The other thing...
You're correct, as far as the zoning portion of your request, I'll agree with you.
Yeah. The other issues are sewer. There were some comments I wanted to address in the comp, the city, Mr., there were comment about sewer capacity and, you know, a lift station being required. We acknowledge that we will have to do upgrades, and sewer will absolutely be, you know, required, and, and we will provide sewer...
For him. His 10 minutes is up.
Okay.
Okay. We'll provide sewer to the property and, and that will be addressed. And so, any, any other questions, I will certainly stop there, but we will, I'll answer any questions now that anybody may have.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, again, we're, the zoning hearing for AZ25-02. Anybody wishing to step forward to speak for against may do so at this time.
My name's Rick Early, 13 Greystone Way Southeast. I live right where that, they're going to back right up to my house. In 2021, my wife moved to the beautiful city from Paulding County because of everything you're doing, and Carter Grove, beautiful. Putting those right there is like putting HUD houses in our neighborhood. This area is a nice neighborhood. I mean, D.R. Horton is building. My son just bought a house and moved in last week to the, it's a nice house, nice lawns and everything. But if you go down further, they're building, they're clearing land right now to build another 100 homes right there. And then they want to put these little bitty lots in there. That's, and they aren't going to be associated in our HOA, but they, they have no amenities, and they're going to be using our pool, jumping the fence and all that. And as far as I'm concerned with them little houses and little lots, they're going to turn them into rentals. People come in there and buy them and rent them in this area. I mean, this is a nice area. So, don't, don't let them come in here and just start flooding it with cheap little dump homes. Make them put something in there if they want to do it. That, you know, I know the developer, he wants to sell the land and develop, that's good, but they got to put something in there other than that. That right there, and I'm, I'm backed right up to it, and you're going 20 feet from my property, you're going to have a little bitty homes, probably three homes backed up to my house. And that's not what we bought here in Cartersville for. So, just do what you got to do, do the right thing. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Yes, sir.
And Cartersville is a beautiful city, so.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak may do so at this time?
Francine Peterson, 16, or 15 Greystone Way Southeast. I'm in Lot 1222. I have a hill, I live right next door to Rick Early. He has a bigger hill, I have a hill, and the Allison's are down below me. I want to thank the Planning Commission for suggesting that it be R20. And I additionally would like to ask that we have an, can't talk, enhanced buffer zone, not 20 feet from my property line, but maybe 30 yards or less, but they, we have Georgia woods up there and that they would leave the trees so that we have some kind of barrier because none of us have fences. And so, I would, I would request that we have, they maintain the native barrier. And also, I would like to see an eight-foot fence up against those houses to kind of give us privacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Randy? What is the zoning of the neighborhood that these folks?
PD, plant development.
The adjacent, the adjacent property?
The one to the north is plant development, and one to the west of it is R10.
And is there a, on that, the existing PD, which I believe both the, the folks just spoke about?
The north, that's the original Carter Grove property.
What are the lot sizes there?
They are a complete mix of lot sizes throughout the development.
No, I'm talking about that border.
They are roughly quarter acre.
Quarter acre. And this, these are what?
Eighty-five hundred.
Eighty-five hundred.
Okay.
So, my, my question, if you can go back to that other slide, David, and I'm sorry, I'm always slow on these things, but the size buffer between, the size buffer that exists in those, the current homes that are in that PD, was there a buffer requirement?
Yes, on the exterior of Carter Grove, they had a 40-foot buffer at the rear of every one of those lots reported on the bottom of the plat, that subdivision, that portion.
Okay, so if, and so, this other proposed piece has how much of a buffer in that proposed plan?
It's called, called the size of what was proposed.
Well, I've heard a couple of people say 20, so let's assume it's 20. So, it's actually, okay. That's, that's all I needed to know right now. Thank you. Hello.
Hey.
Hi, your name and your, your address, please.
I'm Megan Carden, and I live at 256 Belmont. Yeah, so I live in the house just a couple lots up from where you see that red square, and we can't even, at the moment, we can't even let our kids, I mean, go hardly outside onto the street at all because of the traffic. I mean, it just, people are flying through there constantly. So, the thought of having more people being able to come through our neighborhood and just, like, I mean, it's going to be even, even worse. Someone's, a child eventually is, I mean, something bad could happen if you're going to add all of those houses coming right through our neighborhood. I mean, I don't have a problem with anyone building more homes, but they absolutely should not be able to enter through our neighborhood. And I know you want to talk about traffic outside of the neighborhood, but let's talk about trying to drop our kids off at school, coming up that road with all of those houses being added. So, yeah, the biggest thing is, I mean, safety. That alone is a reason not to build these homes. We can't take any more traffic than we already have. And then addition to the amenities, like, you know, many have said before, it's just, I mean, I can't even imagine going for a walk down that road when you're going to have all these cars flying by. So, yeah, safety is a big thing, being able to get to the school. I can speak from experience, you know, dropping our kids off in the morning, that road is already, Belmont's already getting backed up. I mean, it takes a long time to even be able to get out of the neighborhood.
How, how close are those speed tables to your lot?
Not close at all, actually. Yeah. Yeah, they're actually, the speed tables are around the corner of the neighborhood, not where the cars are flying through. So, I wouldn't necessarily say they've helped that much. There's, people are still speeding down there. I think what has helped is the stop signs, obviously, and then a police officer standing or parking and giving tickets, but obviously, we can't have a 24/7 police officer in the neighborhood. So, yeah, you know, just, there's a lot of neighbors that feel this way, so thank you for your time.
Hello. My name's Ashley Conlin, and I live at 18 Creekview Drive. I did actually get the privilege to speak at the last meeting, and I was kind of thrown a curveball that this 109 homes would not be part of our HOA in our subdivision. I guess we're making it a separate subdivision. So, like, the points that I had made kind of don't matter at that point, so I wanted to just change my thought process a little bit. I am also on our ad hoc board in the community, so that's an appointed board by Avanti, who is still the deckler for our neighborhood. So, you know, if these, number one, I just don't think that D.R. Horton needs to do 100, another 109 homes in addition to the 330 homes they have zoned. It's, the neighborhood, I've lived there for almost five years. It's completely changed the way that the subdivision was when I first moved in with the additional homes, which is unfortunate. So, but what I do want to say is if, if this is going to happen, like, some requests have to be made. If they're going to have 109 homes that are not part of our subdivision, I think they should be mandated to have their own HOA because we can't have a bunch of houses that look like trash in the back of our subdivision. They need to have their own entrance monument distinctifying that they are not a part of our subdivision. And then included in that, they should figure out a way to have their own entrance because what you're not seeing in this map is, like, the other 300 homes for D.R. Horton continue on. This is literally in the middle of our subdivision, and they should also have their own amenity package, which is not shown on here because they are going to abuse ours. I mean, they're going to be on our tennis courts, they're going to be jumping our fence. And I'm sorry, but we pay for that, so I do not want that. And that's all I have to say.
You got a bunch of hoodlums moving into that place, huh?
It's, no, but we do.
Worse are the people that are moving here.
So, we had a violation drive today, and the letters were 233 pages long because it is bringing in a different demographic than we've had in Phase 1.
So, relative, and again, I've heard a couple people saying, I'll just mention it, if they are annexed into the city, they have full rights and access to the same infrastructure. So, it's not, obviously, we're considering everything, but, you know, saying that they can't have access to a public road when they're public.
Yeah.
You know, technically, when we drive out in the county, that's a county road. Obviously, we're county residents, but, so anyway, that, that portion of it, I certainly understand. And then you said, in your appointed position, I know the previous lady, I've, I go out through the subdivision a good bit to maybe head out to the golf course, and I do know the speed tables have helped. The great number of y'all that park in the street has slowed everything down a lot, too.
Well, correct.
And, but perhaps, and I say this in all seriousness, maybe that the homeowners association or whatever, that board that you said would consider maybe putting some kind of closer in.
Maybe. I mean, the original plans for the original D.R. Horton home, the speed tables were actually supposed to be right outside of the stop sign. I can't remember his name, but I actually worked with the city to get the speed tables put. It was me talking to, I can't, whoever works here that does that, the engineer or whatever. But the speed tables are not placed correctly from where the original plans had them. So, I don't know why they're back there.
I'm sorry I diverted on that part, but anyway, I, I do appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Patch. I live at 8 Canterbury Walk. Bear with me, I had no plans to speak tonight, but something popped up while we were here. I actually spoke, Avanti asked me... I actually spoke, Avanti asked me to come when they were asking for the rezoning years ago for the Parkside. A couple of things were, just came up about the zoning. Y'all probably have this information there, but just to mention. The reason that it was a big issue all those years ago is when the original developer came in, he was quickly trying to throw lots together. It was, it was a whole big ordeal. And what they found is when they were ready to develop those lots in what's now the Parkside area, they were not the lots that they had ever really intended them to be. And what they found was, is the actual lots were very undesirable. They were larger, but it was a lot of hills, and, you know, there's a lot of drop-offs in the area. So, why they proposed the smaller, the zoning difference was because they were able to create smaller lots, but with more yards. So, they're actually more desirable lots than what it would have been before rezoning. I came and spoke in favor of it. The other component was, there were no additional lots gonna be added. Even though the lots were smaller, they actually created a lot of green space, and that was part of what we all discussed in that time period was, is one of the reasons that we were in favor of the rezoning is more desirable lots, but also much, much more green space, and turning that kind of unusable land into green space in the neighborhood. There was actually a road in the neighborhood that was, had lots that they've converted over into green space. The road no longer exists. So, it does feel a little bit counterintuitive now to use that green space as a reason for why we can add, you know, double the homes from what it, that land could potentially hold now. So, I just wanted to mention that part. There were reasons behind the rezoning, and there were reasons why I was in favor. And kind of coming in and doing it now, it kind of, using the Parkside rezoning is not good evidence in this case, because that was, it had different reasons, different criteria. That's all that I wanted to add.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Isabel O'Neil, two-five-four Belmont Drive. I was not planning on talking at all either, but I got passionate. My house is on that first row as soon as you enter Parkside. We were actually the first house under.
You can go there and point to it if you want to.
Yeah.
Sure.
We were the first house under contract, actually. I'm right here. And we came from Kennesaw. I was right up at Barrett Parkway. We bought our first house there. Pretty much raised in Kennesaw for a long time. We left Kennesaw to come to Cartersville for the nature. We wanted privacy, we wanted slowness. We are growing our family. We have two little kids who are three and two. Like our neighbor Megan said, we can't go outside in the front. We have to be very cautious of crossing the road, going to the park, going to the mailbox, because people zoom past. So, safety is definitely a huge concern for me, but also, I know we were talking about safety in the neighborhood. There's only two entrances to this neighborhood, so if you're adding all these houses, going out the back towards Dallas Highway is extremely dangerous. People are going sixty to eighty miles per hour on that road. So, if you're adding more traffic and more cars with no stoplight, all of the trees are overgrown that way, so you can't even see the oncoming traffic. Something fatal is gonna happen eventually. Or it probably already has, and I don't know about it, but I go that way a lot to take my kids to preschool in Dallas. So, that's a big concern for me, and then the whole lots being like twenty feet away. Like, we, we specifically chose a type of fence, that's a ranch-style fence, so we could enjoy our trees and enjoy our backyard. And so if all of that gets cut down, like, why did we even move here? You know, that was a big part of us choosing this house. We were the first ones, because we wanted to be able to choose our lot where we could feel nature, have nature, but still be a part of a community that was growing with families. Very nice, we were right across from a school that our kids can grow up going to. So, yeah, I would like, I think I agree with everybody else. Like, if, if you're gonna build there, at least like have a bigger buffer versus twenty feet. I feel like that's nothing, and they're gonna cut down all of our trees, and we've really enjoyed our view of our backyard.
And, and I'm gonna say this, and it's gonna be unpopular, but they're gonna cut down all of their trees. And again, I, I, I'm not poo-pooing the point, but they are, you know, we told you you had to cut your trees or you couldn't. But again, again, I just, I see your point, and I just wanted to make that distinction as I typically do in other cases, so.
Yeah, no, well, thank you. Just safety mainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hi.
Hello. My name is Lizia Leefe, and I live at the lot right next to Bella, off of Belmont Drive. My backyard also backs up to this property. I'm on Summit Drive, so I, or Summit Drive, Belmont Drive, sorry. And I see all the coming and going, everybody going to one of the two exits that my neighbor mentioned. And like she said, Summit Drive is a concern. And the reason I wanted to come up here and talk about this is because last time we were here, the representative for Forest Star came up, and he talked about how these were, these houses were already planned for, right? There were two thousand other houses that were taken up by the Switch Limited project. But correct me if I'm wrong, I went home and I did some digging on it. It looks like there were three additional points of ingress and egress planned for those houses that got taken out by Switch Limited. Am I wrong? Does anybody know?
Well, the Switch property is on the opposite.
Correct, but Old Alabama, or.
That, that access off of Old Alabama Road.
There was no additional access off of Old Alabama for the Carter Grove subdivision.
This here in the master plan?
The one in Old Alabama, they weren't allowed fake road access.
Right.
And then there were two.
We're talking about Switch or the original, talking about the original Carter Grove plan?
Original Carter Grove.
Development.
Yeah, you would know.
Yeah.
So, there was, there were a whole lot of additional houses that were planned, but there were multiple points of ingress and egress that were planned as well to facilitate those additional houses. This is one-hundred-and-nine houses, I don't know if it fits into the current two entrances and exits for Phase One and Phase Two. So, if there were going to do this, it, would it be possible to put anywhere an additional point? Because like my neighbor said, Summit Drive is not suitable for that level of traffic. Somebody's going to get hurt, it's very windy, it's very hilly. One teenager that's not paying enough attention, and they're gonna end up in a ditch or in a tree. And we'd all hate that. So, is there anywhere that we'd be able to talk about putting a future entrance or exit to the neighborhood if we were going to add this additional one-hundred-and-nine homes?
That's going back down through county, all the way down.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be part of the city of Cartersville.
Or their switch.
To something?
Yeah.
And DOT would have to approve eventually.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't.
That, that being the case, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be something that would impact the zoning case that we're looking at again. I don't want to turn on your point.
With the zoning.
It's not something we technically, that, an extra entrance wouldn't be something that we would be considering in making this decision regarding zoning or annexation.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for the zoning portion of the hearing, AZ twenty-five dash zero-two?
My name is Ron Allison, I'm at seventeen Greystone Way. And my main concern with the, with the project is drainage. Our property is extremely vulnerable to erosion. And I'm in, I'm in contact with Public Works, they came out and looked at our situation today, and we talked. But my question is, there were two or three retaining ponds, or, yeah, retaining ponds, I think they call them. I've never seen a retaining pond, but I do know when I went to the HOA meeting, they require maintenance. Part of our HOA funds goes to an annual maintenance. Who will maintain these, these ponds so that we can control drainage on long-term?
That, that would be on the developer, would it not, Keith?
Well, normally in the city, most retention or detention ponds are owned by the property owner or, in this case, probably an HOA. And they would be responsible for the maintenance of it. There are, the city has codes which require certain maintenance, which we can enforce on an individual and have them clean them out and make sure they're operating properly. But the actual maintenance of them is normally the property owner and/or HOA.
But do, but are they gonna have an HOA?
Yes.
They will?
I'm, I'm, they're, I'm seeing nods in the affirmative back there, so. And they may address that in their closing statement.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name's Kyle Tripp. I live at twenty-three Greystone Way, southeast Cartersville, three-zero-one-two-zero. We directly abut the proposed zoning that we're talking about this evening. The main curiosity, I, I thought we'd hear it again from the applicant tonight, but I don't recall the buffer that's called for that meets the back of our property. We're basically where that white blob is up at the top. So, I'd like some clarity on this buffer there, if possible.
Thank you. Is that, is that by, in a plan development, is that by ordinance, there's a required buffer? Do they submit whatever?
Yeah, under the R-seven zoning, there is a requirement for green space, but there's no requirement as to where that green space is placed. So, in this layout here, the developer opted to locate the green space around the perimeter of the property, I mean, the twenty-five percent rule, to R-seven.
But R-seven was denied.
So, that, that became a de facto buffer by them locating the green space around the property.
What does R-20, which is what was approved?
R-20 has no buffer requirements from adjoining residential uses.
Okay.
Neither does R-10.
Okay. Those are huge points.
Sorry, just to clarify, though, there's a forty-foot buffer existing on the current property owners on the top.
Yes.
And.
On the Greystone property.
Correct. So, the, the existing residents there, they can't get within forty feet of the property. Like, with any structures or anything like that.
Correct.
But, and that was because.
It was called out as a natural buffer on the final flat for that area.
That is because it was a planned development?
Yeah, there was a long, the exterior of Carter Grove at that time, and most of the exterior lots were either at elephant space or buffer.
So, currently, all those lots along the top, including yours, has a forty-foot, you have your own forty-foot buffer in the back.
Understood. It's from that property line towards my house.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
And so if they had another, let's say that was, happened to be twenty, and I don't know the scaling of all that, so it actually, you would have a. Huh?
Don't know what that is.
Okay.
Yeah, and so presently, because of the denial of R-seven, so now we're looking at R-20, which has no buffer.
Well, we're, we're.
That is, that is correct, if that's what ultimately is approved by the council.
Correct. I mean, that's.
And if council were to say it was R-10, there's no buffer requirement for that either, correct? That's what I thought I just heard, so.
So, you, you could, you can have excitement over R-20 because the lots are bigger, but you kind of get hosed, because there's no buffer.
R-seven was recommended for denial by Planning Commission.
Correct.
That recognition comes to council, they have not denied R-seven.
Understood.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure that's up for discussion, is it?
Yes, that is what the application there.
Yes. There's, even though the Planning Commission recommends denying an application, the original application is still before the mayor and council. So, you know, they are considering the R-seven application.
Gotcha.
Now, they have the right, as they do in any case, they could decide to change it to R-10, or they could deny it, and it would become R-20 if they approve the annexation. And they also have a right to impose conditions on a re, on a zoning.
Sure.
Such as, you know, if it's R-20, we want you to have a twenty-foot buffer, for example, you know. But, yeah, they can do that. But what is before them today really is the entire project, as it may end up being developed, in simple way in terms.
Right. I mean, we, we know it's gonna get developed. What our goal here, both at Planning and City Council, is, is to hopefully influence that for us that already live there, we're not naive. If I own that forty acres, I'd, I'd want a development probably, especially if I've held it for a generation or two. But I'm not aware of any outreach that's been made by the applicant to any of the residents, either in, you know, Greystone Way or on Belmont or anything. Typically, from my experience, that, that, that usually happens. Everything's negotiable. But I, I'm not aware of everything, I just know that I, I'm just saying, I'm not aware of.
Well, and applications made here, you know, we, guessing their signs posted, even if it's a county piece of property?
Yes.
And everything's advertised, there's a.
No, I'm not denying the advertisement, I'm just saying that typically there's, hey, knocking on the door, or, hey, you know, it's pretty easy to get people.
The applicant, we're saying.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And quite frankly, I think it's one of the great reasons why we have two of these hearings.
Sure.
So, everybody can kind of hear and absorb, and perhaps have discussions that are outside of this council.
That would be wonderful.
I love it when everybody comes in and agrees on something, it makes our job a lot easier.
It's a great, it's a great deal for the city, it's great revenue, and we know denying that.
You know, Mr., Mr. Bobby is here, and he will be happy after the meeting to meet you and get your contact information and talk to you at length, however long any of you want to talk to him about the project, because he gets paid to do that.
That's right. Two-fifteen hour.
I don't know what his rate is, but yes.
So, yeah, so that's, that's a good distinction on that R-seven. I didn't even, I just assumed that the, that because of the denial, but, but that doesn't mean that it holds weight, y'all still have to vote on it, and that's kind of like what tonight is, the open discussion of that. Number two is where the rubber hits the road. Obviously, living there, yes, they're their trees. But we would love to see, you know, Ag, Ag is, of course, county. Ag one to R-seven is too stark a change, and just to avoid having to file a variance just to default to R-seven, doesn't seem like a viable negotiation to me, it's just like taking the easy way out. So, I would think that the applicant would want to have some discussions with the neighbors. The last thing is also more directed to the applicant that would love to see a provision in their covenants to limit rental, is there a ratio? I mean, 'cause this is visually, but, you know, we're walking through when they're building parkland. One day, there's, you know, they're going up, and the next day, there's a series of five that are already sold. Now, to me, that means someone from New York or LA or whatever, from some REIT, has come in and bought five at a time, and now what city's dealing with is you've got absentee owners. And absentee owners do not take care of their properties.
Yeah.
They will drag you.
And, and I could tell you, council can condition that, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, that is.
And after Mr. Early's statements at the beginning of this, I have a little note for discussion on that. But that is a, the, the council could, if they choose, condition to say that in this development, there's not to be any more than ten percent rentals.
Yeah, that'd be wonderful. I mean, it's just primed for that type of transaction.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I don't know why you didn't come up first, you were the first one here.
Just got here early.
That's right.
Sorry. My name's Alan Ponder, I live at nine Greystone Way. I live at the western end, just before the cul-de-sac, that's bordering on the north end of this development. I'm not happy about any of it, and it seems like this is a foregone conclusion, that this is gonna happen, whether it's R-seven, R-10, or R-20, it's up to you guys. But the very reason that I bought that lot was because it backed up to the Pettit Preserve. And I've enjoyed living here for eight years, and enjoyed having nature in my backyard. Now, that doesn't concern most people, I realize. But it does me, it was the very reason I moved there, and now it's gonna go away. Regardless of how much buffer there is between that development and ours, it's going to destroy a swath of the preserve that will cut off nature access. No more wildlife, no more birds, nothing, just squirrels. And I'm not happy about it, and I'm gonna have to sell my property and leave Cartersville. That's it.
Good evening, my name is Tyler Meborn. I live at two-forty-eight Belmont Drive, so that's gonna be plot number four there from the top left. I'm gonna be like right next to that retention pond. I'm not gonna hit on everything that everybody else said. The one thing I do worry about is the precedent that zoning something outside of downtown that R-seven sets, according to the municipal code. I mean, it's more reserved for downtown and more highly congested areas, so just the future precedent of what zoning will be done around in other places of Cartersville. The one thing I do appreciate about R-seven is that the buffer, the extra buffer that you're gonna get, I understand that with the twenty-five percent green space allocation, that if you go up to R-10, you're basically gonna run up with about the same number of lots. And anybody who's more privacy-oriented and worried about the trees, from my understanding, you will be backing up to those red lines with the lots, or you could have the potential to do that unless I'm, unless there's a misunderstanding there. But just one other thing that I have, yeah, so the, the lots will be able to go all the way, so you'll have less of a, a buffer, so. So that is one thing that with the R seven, if you're more worried about the privacy, if you're on those lots. For me, just one issue is the, um, I know that with the retention ponds there, I'm going to be closer to the retention pond. Um, but on each side of the western portion and the northern side of the grid, um, you have probably about a forty-five degree slope going in every direction down to our backyards. Water runoff's already really bad, and I know that there's going to be hydrology study and stuff. So I might be fine with a retention pond, but I worry about some of the other properties that are further away from that. With the water runoff that comes off that hill, it really does pull up, and, um, so we're having the retention ponds just at the top there, uh, those further down on Belmont. Um, the water does get really bad, um, just with the grade of the slope that was done from where those properties, they'll probably be sitting up about at least thirty feet higher than my house. Um, just with the slope, that slope, that's in my backyard, is already taller than my house, so, um, having somebody, if you have an R ten lot sitting right there, there's no trees, no grass to catch any of that runoff, and it's all going to end up in my backyard, um, or my neighbors, um, just depending on where that retention pond falls. But, um, that's going to be my main concerns.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to speak on AZ twenty-five dash zero two, the zoning portion may do so at this time? And seeing none, uh, I'll ask the applicant if he'd like to make any final comments?
Yes, just a couple of things, and, and, and my, uh, the applicant, my client has one or two things they may, can add as well, you know, that's, that's, uh, specific to the project. And, uh, just very brief, and, but, but a couple of things I think that were important. One that, and I ran out of time, and that's why I didn't address these things earlier, so, um, uh, speed and people driving through there that, and I wish I could have, you know, added this earlier. Um, I think it was talked about at the public hearing at the Planning Commission, but where the access will be into the project, I think it's important to note that there is, uh, there will be a stop sign that will be placed there. I think that will help, um, with speed. Um, certainly, if people are, you know, as people talk about running fifty, sixty miles an hour through there, obviously with a stop sign there, that should help, um, certainly slow people down. We're certainly also not opposed and are open, my clients have told me, to helping, whether it be placing additional speed tables in that area on Belmont, um, and assisting with that, um, to help slow people down as well. There's some openness to that, um, as well. The other thing, uh, that was asked was about the HOA, um, and we have had, uh, repeated and numerous discussions with Avante, who is in control of, uh, the Carter Grove subdivision about, um, trying to join the HOA. It is our desire to join the HOA, we would like to join, uh, the Carter Grove HOA, but we don't have a right to come in. And, uh, we would, but, uh, we absolutely would, would love to do that if we can, if we can work that out with them, and, uh, but, uh, you know, that's sort of in the works and, um, in, in discussions. If we don't do that, if we're, if we cannot work out an agreement with them, it would be a private agreement we would have to work out. But if we cannot do that, then we absolutely will have our own HOA, um, and we will, it will be responsible for maintaining, uh, you know, the, the ponds and the various things that we talked about here, uh, today. And so, um, so I want to make that clear, that, uh, if we can't join the Carter Grove HOA, and we can't work out an agreement with, with Avante with that, then we will absolutely have our own HOA that, um, and the, the residents there will pay dues, and they will be responsible for, for maintaining, uh, the, uh, you know, the amenities and, and the, uh, the various parts of their, uh, their, their, uh, neighborhood there. And there will also be, someone mentioned, one person I think assigned, there will also be a sign that will go into that neighborhood there at the entrance. So, uh, with that, if I can have the, the applicant wanted to, uh, say, a representative from the applicant want to say one or two quick words, um, just to add a couple of things.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, mayor and council members. Um, my name's Ren Gezoni with Four Star, located at three-three-three-zero Cumberland Boulevard, Atlanta, Georgia, three-zero-three-three-nine. Uh, we're really excited about this opportunity to bring a subdivision to the city. Um, as you know, Four Star is the owner and developer of Parkside at Carter Grove. And we, if the community is happy with that subdivision, we look forward to, to doing the same with this proposed site. We, we noticed that, um, there are some, uh, concerns about stormwater as such, so we take that very seriously. Four Star is a national developer, and we will take that into account during the design, engineering, and development phase of the, the project. And, um, again, uh, Parkside, Parkside at Carter Grove, um, has been doing well in terms of sales. So that translates to people wanting to move into this community, wanting those types of lots and houses. And that is exactly what we're proposing here for this site, to bring the same houses, same type of houses, and same lot sizes, um, similar lot sizes, right? Whether they're ten thousand square feet or eight thousand five hundred square feet, um, it's up to, to council to guide us and staff to guide us, whether you want to go with the R seven or the R ten. Again, we're proposing the same community here, and we want to be good neighbors. That's why we attended this, this session to hear the comments from the public, so that we can make this a better community for everyone. Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions, we're going to thank you for being here. Um, through this discussion, I, I guess, a couple of things that came to mind for, from the, um, it doesn't matter who answers this. Um, Bobby, I know you're filling in for Brandon, I'm sure.
Sure.
He's got a big favor coming back the other direction. The, um, the, the thought of putting a condition to limit rentals, I'm assuming that's something that would not be objectionable to the developer?
Yeah, most of our communities, uh, council and board of commissioners, they, they impose that, that condition, so we understand.
Okay. And then, um, the other part, and again, just spitballing here, um, R ten with a buffer as a condition of some sort, is that something that, uh, y'all would consider?
Mm-hmm. Under DR ten, there is no requirement for an open space, you know, but we, we can, um, if it's a condition, we can allocate a certain, um, depth to those lots. That would be a vegetated buffer, could be undisturbed. I, I just am hesitant to, to state, you know, twenty, fifty, forty, sixty, seventy.
I'm not asking you to commit to it tonight, I'm just, I'm just kind of throwing out things there to consider that, again, from things that we've heard from the, from the neighborhood, uh, folks, and, um-
Okay.
I will tell you that, uh, I, one of the, the other gentleman here pointed out to me in the R seven plan that was originally submitted, along Greystone Way, um, the, that showed the, the vegetative buffer, buffer around the, the perimeter. That plan showed, uh, that was approximately forty-five to fifty feet of, of a buffer, vegetative buffer with that R seven plan. And so, uh, along that edge of Greystone Way, those lots, so, you know, it, it, but it, and, and part of this is, you know, because we are kind of stuck between knowing whether to go R seven or R ten, and, and we don't know kind of how to design this, because we don't quite know which direction to go. And so, um, you know, that's-
I think you've met a lot of new friends tonight, they'll be happy to give you a little direction of something they might be a little more comfortable with. And, uh, you got two weeks to do it, and it, again, it wouldn't break my heart at all if everybody came back in here and held hands and said, hey, this, we could all live with this. So, um, yeah.
Question. There was a concern about a step down in quality of the homes in this development? So you're saying it's ju, it's going to be just like the ones above it? The quality of the homes?
Yes, yes, the, the homes.
Parkside, which is to the west.
Same building.
Yes.
So that's to the west, just above Belmont.
Would y'all, would y'all be willing to, um, you know, come up with a proposed condition to, um, state, you know, just state that it would be this similar type quality, you know, you know? With respect to that, to give some assurances to council with respect to that?
Yes, and on the application submitted, we included, um, elevations of the houses, so that's-
We could include those as part of the approval process, but if y'all want to be a little more specific with respect to that, feel free.
Okay.
So is this what's in Parkside now, these type homes?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So that, so they are four- and five-bedroom homes?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Randy, I'm sorry, you can have it, go back to that one picture that has vegetation on it, or is it, you're showing the?
No, the previous one.
No, the one that had all the trees along that property line.
Okay. So I'm trying to wrap my head around this. This is current R seven?
Yes.
Okay. So currently, you said that's a forty-foot buffer?
No, Bobby said their, their green space is required, and they chose to put green space along the perimeter. And that section along Greystone is between forty-five to fifty feet.
Plus the buffer that they already currently have in their property?
There's a forty-foot buffer on the rear of all the homes along Greystone.
Okay.
So if that plan, you know, if y'all approve that plan, you effectively had a, have an eighty-foot buffer between, between the rest of the-
What about the people in Parkside that we've heard from a few of, was there a, was there a buff, is there a buffer piece on the back of theirs?
They have green space along that, uh, edge of property line, too, along the, going toward the south, along the western.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they've scaled that out yet, but, I mean, uh, they were-
You don't typically buffer like in similar developments from each other, Bobby?
Right.
Right.
It would sort of be like neighborhood, you know.
I understand.
Create a problem.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just trying to understand.
But a buffer means no, like, no fence?
Doesn't mean no fence, technically no structures.
Right.
It's natural.
Can you, do you have to main, do you have to keep vegeta- Do you have to keep vegetation there? Or do you, or, again, because this shows trees along there, and it looks nice and pretty, but is that buffer?
Mayor, that depends on what type of buffer is actually approved by the council. There are standards that are required for the buffer in the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
And, you know, we, you know, read those to you, provide those, but in addition to that, sometimes a developer or council will also say, well, instead of the standards, we want these additional things to be put in this buffer. Like sometimes they say, we would like a fence before the buffer or behind the buffer. Or sometimes they say, they want additional trees planted besides what's already there, or something along those lines. So there are standards for buffers in the city, and, you know, Randy's staff will make those available to everybody. But, you know, if you want a specific type of buffer, you also have the power to do that.
Thank you. Okay. And what I'd really love for you to get with all the adjacent folks and all the people we've heard from tonight, come up with something that is amenable to everybody, and we all walk out of here friends, and we get some good neighbors that aren't going to jump fences and whatnot, as I've been concerned a little bit tonight, but, uh-
But did I hear, I just want to clarify, this is just in general. So if there's a buffer, I can put my fence on that buffer?
Yes. Sometimes fences are a part of a buffer, in combination with a buffer.
And, and sometimes it's an undisturbed buffer that we don't allow a fence on.
But that's not what they have here.
Correct.
But we could put that-
They're showing green space, they've never showed the actual-
I'm sorry, I'm focusing on who's already there.
Yeah.
They, on their final flat of that section of Carter Grove, there will be a forty-foot natural buffer.
Does that mean they can put a fence on?
They can go to the edge of their property, if it doesn't be in any easements or, um-
It's not in a stormwater easement.
Got it, got it. Thank you. Move on.
Councilman Fox, yes, sir.
The entrance to this neighborhood, you said there's, so it's going to be a three-way stop right there?
I've heard, yeah, it's, you have to literally-
We, we, y'all can have the, with the, the public hearing parts, I, I understand, we're going to try to answer that for you, but-
Yes.
That's, that, that would have to go through city design, it would have to meet appropriate design standards, and if, again, the national, what is the?
Transportation.
Transportation, yeah. So they would have to meet that standard.
Let me, um, ask one question about the Parkside, does Parkside have any amenities in it at all currently?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it does.
So, so you have a pool, yeah, do you have any of those types of things in your HOA in Parkside?
Yeah, yes, there's a, a pool, um, a cabana, I believe there's some, um, hm?
Wait a second.
Michael, why don't you come up here?
So.
I'm Michael Crupi, Four Star, the amenity that's being built across the street serves Parkside, so it's, uh, was that junior Olympic pool, pickleball, basketball, green space, all of that serves Parkside.
Can I, can I, I'm sorry, for, for my, and let me just, let me just, hold on, folks, we've had a good public hearing so far, we're, we're going to ask questions and get answers, but yelling from the, yelling from here, that's not how we do things here. So, I need to know who you are again, please, for my clerk, she's panicking over there.
Michael Crupi, Four Star.
Say your name again.
Michael Crupi, Four Star.
Thank you, Mike. Okay.
Michael Crupi.
Crupi, C-R-U-P-I-E.
And the question was, I, I guess, is Parkside part of Carter Grove or not?
Yeah, so there's the pool and I think two tennis courts that are already there. We are currently building the new pool on the left side of that road, the tennis courts, kiosks, all that, that serves Parkside.
So the amenities that are in Carter Grove are part of Parkside?
Correct.
You're part of the HOA and all that group there?
Correct.
That, that was the question that I think you wanted answered.
All right, I'll answer, I'll ask my question. Okay. So Parkside is part of Carter Grove subdivision currently, right?
Correct.
So Parkside is. So my, now to my question I want to get to for clarification. So the, the new subdivision that you're proposing will not be part of Parkside. Why are you not putting any, so when we look, when I look at this subdivision and the level of housing that it has, the level of quality of life it has, why are you not raising that bar, um, in this subdivision to have an amenity? It looks like you've got forty-one acres to put in some amenities for this subdivision, instead of relying on whatever else you've already built, or, or Carter Grove, or what have you. But, so I think one of the concerns is, as, as we look around, okay? Um, and I'll go back to previous comments I made before, as we look at the city, one, R twenty's going away, okay? I'd like to protect that. Then we want to dumb it down to R seven, or bring it down to R seven, which is a smaller lot. You're putting four- and five-bedroom homes on these lot, which means you're going to have children. So then, when you've got children playing on a lot smaller lot, you can't put a playset on a really small lot, or it just does not fit right. And so when you start looking at the quality of life of Cartersville, okay, and I'm, I'm glad you're here, let's, let's keep that, in this, in this particular subdivision, I'd like to keep that bar raised for the quality of, quality of life of the home buyer. And so when you look, I think there's an expectation, right? There's a, there's sort of a level of expectation of, we built, that we're going to build this, these homes, and we're going to, we're going to have these certain amenities in this subdivision. Now, there are, yes, there are some other subdivisions in our town that are built without those amenities, and those people haven't required that. I think when you look at the makeup, and you look at the audience of this subdivision, I think there's, they're probably asking you, like, hey, let's raise the bar and have some amenities that bring the quality of life and the quality of home. So when I look at your property, it's great property, great layout, I am, I would like to see, um, you know, when you look at, um, I know there's, it's planned development, so the lot sizes aren't really, you know, adjudicated, but there is some R twenty up there, and I know you all have got some R ten and had some variances to do that. I'd like to see us maybe do a little, something a little bit different, at least raise the bar a little bit in your plan, and raise some of those things up. And I know that that costs money, and I understand that, but I think that when you start looking at, what I would like to see as we start to develop, we have got a lot of multi, multi-family home developments, and we need a full menu of products for living, okay? Riddle, ownership, what have you. But I think in this scenario, when you look at this neighborhood, they're probably asking for that bar to be raised a little bit, and I would encourage you to do that.
Any other questions or any other comments, Mr. Walker?
My, and my only comment would be, again, we are actively working with Avante to try to, you know-
That's good.
Work to get into the HOA. Um, that's, that's been in process. Work to get into the HOA. That's, that's been in process for a long time, so I will pour you in this, in this public forum with those, the details of those discussions, but they, suffice it to say, we've, we have been over backwards to try to, to try to make that happen, so. And we'll continue to do so, so.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? All right. That, again, concludes the, wait, there's more. That concludes the zoning portion of the public hearing. I'm going to close that. And I'll remind everybody, as I open up the annexation portion of this application, that everything that was just said, everything we've already experienced together, is going to be transcribed into the annexation portion. So, with that being said, Mr. Menino, I don't know that I need you to explain what's going on here, county to city. I'll open up a public hearing for the annexation portion of the request. I don't know if Mr. Walker wants to come up and grace us with any more tonight relative to annexation. What an invitation it was, the question, but...
Yeah, no, not, not really, other than, obviously, we, we, you know, we don't particularly have any interest in the property being annexed without the property being rezoned. And so, and so, we would, that's my only comment about that. Certainly, I'd like to, I'd take any questions on that topic, if we may.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. All right. Anyone else wishing to get up and speak about the annexation portion of this request may do so at this time?
I think this fits in here. Do you need my information again?
Yep.
Lori Patch, eight Canterbury Walk. When we were here talking about Parkside and adding that addition in, one of the stipulations that city council put on the rezoning then was the amenities that we are, that Four Star is building currently. That was some of the concerns that were addressed at that time, is expanding it, having the increase in houses. We didn't have the amenities to accommodate that, so it had to be done by a certain amount, it was very particular things that y'all put on there, it had to be done at a certain amount of time. It's almost done, hopefully, maybe next summer we'll be in the pool. But I think a big concern that I'm hearing from a lot of people is, with this new section, personally, I would be in favor of being part of the HOA since it's right smack dab in the middle of our neighborhood. Another 50 to 100 homes, we wouldn't be able to accommodate with our current amenities. So I think what Mr. Roth was getting to a minute ago, it was, I think that, I guess my request would be is, if it is annexed, if that could be part of the stipulations, an amenity requirement.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I will close the annexation portion of AZ 25-02. Again, we'll go through this process again on August the 7th, and then it'll be taken over to, turned over to council for final consideration. So, thank you all for being here. Sometimes we have meetings that last about 20 minutes, but when it takes this long, we'll stay as long as we want. And so I appreciate everybody coming out and participating in local government. Council, do y'all want to plod on, or do you need a break?
Keep plodding.
All right, we're going to plod on. Just know when you step outside, the sound gets amplified. We're going to keep on doing the business. You're welcome to stay and watch the speed round, but we're going to move on forward. Chief Champion, you have got the first item. Under purchases, please, sir. If you can, if you can safely traverse, you know what a salmon feels like? Trying to get upstream there.
So, so is this why you need a boat to go upstream?
Good evening, mayor and council. This particular item is a rescue boat for the fire department. This will enhance our ability to service the river as we have a new boat ramp coming to that area. We currently service about three miles of the Edewa River, sometimes up to approximately six with mutual aid and automatic aid with Bartow County. We sought bids for this boat through two of the verified vendors that do provide a boat that has access to very shallow water. Those two vendors provided quotes, and we would like to go with the lowest quote with rock proof boats for $78,830, which does require a $2,500 deposit to hold the spot. With 11-month build time, that's one of the biggest constraints, is the build time to get that boat to us. This is a budgeted item, and we do recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Forsyth, you're up. Mr. Greer, you're on deck.
Yes, sir, this is a request to replace a transfer switch on a Main Street booster pump, or lift station from Nixon Power Services for $7,638.75. It's a budgeted maintenance item.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Steven Levis, where'd he go?
He's, he's stuck outside in the crowd. We may never see him again.
The latest business renewal was annual renewal of our latest list agreement. We should approve that one.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
That was a great speech, Stephen.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. I have my items out there, and two of them went missing, so I've got to have to wing it.
Patch management software renewal.
Yeah, this is our patch management software renewal from Action One. It's a budgeted support renewal for $8,700.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Office 365 renewal.
This is our yearly support renewal for Office 365. It's budgeted from Converge Technology Solutions for $97,920. Is that right? Okay, all right.
Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. That was one of those added items, by the way. Mr. Archer, you are up, sir.
Okay.
He don't know where he's...
He ain't know what happened.
I had a filibuster, but I think I'll just wait on that.
Very good.
Make a motion for a...
X-Mark laser mowers.
Yes. Parks and Recreation is requesting approval to purchase two X-Mark Laser S-Series 60-inch zero-turn mowers. We'll be making the purchase through the Omnia Partners Government Contract 515-0724 through Taylor Outdoor Power Equipment. The cost under the government contract from Omnia is $22,048 for the two units. These units will replace two older mowers, which we will surplus once these are procured. These are budgeted items recommended for approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Chief Klenninger, good evening to you, sir.
Good evening. Police Department's requesting permission to buy 30 suppressors and flash hiders for patrol rifles that we purchased a while back, so that we can equip those guns and have them issued, put into service. The total cost of the flash, the suppressors and flash hiders is $35,820, and GT distributors will be the vendor. The funding for this purchase is, if approved, will come from federal asset forfeiture.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, chief.
Next item is, we're requesting approval to purchase a 2025 Chevrolet Tahoe four-wheel drive at a cost of $52,143 from Wilson County Motors, and also a 2025 Chevrolet Silverado pickup at a cost of $48,000 from Donahue Chevrolet. Also, $20,000 per vehicle for a total of $40,000 to equip those with light sirens, computers, et cetera. The total cost of these purchases will be $140,143. It is a budgeted item, and also will be funded through asset forfeiture.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last item for you.
The last item is our annual purchase to restock our ammo for duty and training purposes. Nine-millimeter, 223, 556, and shotgun ammo are all included, and with a total cost, well, the vendor would be Gulf State's distributors. Total cost of the purchase would be $18,683, also funded through asset forfeiture.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, chief. Mr. McKee, good evening to you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. First item is a purchase of a backhoe to replace 1997 model. Total would be $116,071, and this is a budgeted expense.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Second item is the purchase of a brush cutter for $10,467.46. This would also be a budgeted expense.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last item for you, Tom.
And the last item is a purchase of 66 various sizes of electric meters for our inventory. Total would be $25,340, and this would also be a budgeted expense.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Porta.
Gas and food truck, we use MI shipment and void lunch, recommend you use them again. Recommend approval, Mr. Green.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Hello, Freddie.
How are you, sir? Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Second quarter Motorola, 2025 Motorola radio system invoice for Bartow County was received. We're asking for approval for this in the amount of $44,816.
I would like to see the details of this bill tonight. Is there any, no, questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
As a GDOT supplemental agreement, one, that they're requesting, there was $2,384 left on a contract from 2021 that after the four-year period, it expired. We're just asking to amend that and have the mayor sign that through DocuSign.
Any questions or discussion? If not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Freddie. Dan, back to you.
Yes, sir. I'd like to enter and agree with BLR Training for Void Training, online training. Recommend approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, I agree with George Quickstart in the cars and social school system. This will be for the calendar of the fiscal year, starting July 1.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Recommend approval. Will the invoice to Northwest Georgia Regional Commission be a part of that? I mentioned $24,137.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We're going to do the added items before we get to Diana. And so, Mr. Lovell, you've got three added items of those first three, that could all be handled in one motion.
Yes, first three items are agreements with CSX related to the West Side feeder main installation, and is recommended by staff for your approval.
All right. Chair Lieutenant, a motion to approve all three items?
Motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Mr. Lovell?
The next item is a resolution to waive the maintenance bond requirement for Bartow County Water Department, and to authorize the public courts director to do so. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Any discussion? Not a motion?
Motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Dan, one digital.
Yes, one digital, Void River Services. Recommend approval of this. The final, Keith, I got this agreement earlier this week. Going to need to basically get council approval, move forward one digital, but final agreement to be approved by Keith.
Chair, Chair Lieutenant, a motion, a motion does need to note that, though, correct?
Yes.
Motion to approve one digital with the...
Subject to approval by city manager and attorney.
Thank you. Got a motion, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Keith, your final add item?
Yes, mayor, this is approval to an amendment to the retention agreement with Andy Davis to represent us in the opioid litigation. It is represented. It is recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion. Motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Hello, Diana. Ms. DeSanto, no pressure, but you have a resolution to update the Georgia Fund One?
I do, and this is to include US Bank as an additional financial institution, and to add myself as an authorized representative, and to remove the former finance director.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The financial report.
Very brief. We'll just talk about some highlights, some highlights from this May. And you guys will get a lot more information next month for how the, how the city ended the year, but we did end May with a strong financial position, both from a cash and a net profit standpoint. All city operating enterprise funds are operating quite well. The general fund had a strong cash, cash position covering approximately 96% of the overall budget, as well as a current net profit of $822,000. While our local option sales tax and building permits have trended down a little bit this year from the prior year, we are seeing increases in other revenue sources, such as franchise fees, which have a 15% increase from the prior year. Our gas, electric, and water and sewer sales remain strong. Water and sewer unrestricted cash balance is temporarily lower, temporarily lower than normal, as we're waiting drawdowns for the resolution just passed with Georgia Fund One. Revenues from our industrial heat space for gas, as well as a large year-end settlement in electric, are driving the increase in net profit for those funds this year. And then additional details are following in a packet, as well as available to others.
Beautifully done. Any questions? Anything to add, Dan?
Yes, sir.
Good, on all counts. Thank you, Diana. Any other business that needs to come for council tonight?
Cars will want to stay, I guess they'll be here in August.
Absolutely. Good, good, good. Chair Lieutenant, a motion to adjourn.